Good morning.
Okay, I just walked into the other room. So, okay. Yeah, the other one. I don't know how real like college. Alrighty, thank you. Okay, bye. I'm sorry, Melch. Somebody was talking ninety miles an hour and I couldn't even make out what you're saying, that's on my...
Okay, um, two cancelable services.
What?
Can't force me to do it.
She putting tips back in the system. That's my guess.
Well, I mean, she was... She improved, so I don't want to...
More unfortunate. Like a problem. Hello?
Service.
My department's here.
That's good.
Who am I part of here?
Sir, you feeling well?
That's too high.
Yeah, I mean, we just actually finally got the whole... We actually got the check from Halloween. But she was...
Oh, that's too bad. Not really bad. Not, you know, just having the one long picture or stuff. Thank you. Please call.
Good morning.
Hi, so you called this day?
Yeah.
All right, did you leave a message?
No, I decided not to.
Okay.
I've got a question, we have free time.
Okay. You can tell me. No. Did you hear that? You enjoy free time, that upsets me.
Oh. Well, I can handle it.
I guarantee you I'm not enjoying free time. What free time? Say, do you have free time?
Good morning. Good, how are you doing? Good. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning. You want to miss me?
Hi.
It's okay, it's not frizzy.
Okay. Not that it's frizzy. It's not a coincidence for her. Her...
He opens it on still.
Me too.
Of course you get it. Well, there you go.
Your YouTube piece was good. I was sitting in your... Did you... I was sitting in your chair.
Well, I just saw the note.
Oh, yeah. It was even worse, sorry. So, you're getting here. I'm getting here. All right. Cam, I got it. Thanks again. I think I know what this is. That's it.
I'll be in next one.
Yeah. Uh, Channel Ten News. It's actually doing a... Since it's a pop night out. Oh, good.
Well, you'll enjoy this. I recently got to come across supervisor and Carrie. And she said, "Oh, is this kid going to be supervised?" Yes. She said, "Does she really have a chance in that race that can rescue her life?" And I said, "Well, give him a try." She said, "That's the best." I don't know if you know, uh, Carrie Brown.
Oh, you got it. You gotta know her.
Where's she at? Oh, I don't know her at all.
Does she know you?
Oh, really?
She knows you.
Which, what's she look like? I know her, but... Maybe she's not looking.
She's probably smart too.
She spent about twenty-three years in the... After the...
Very good.
Okay. Yeah. All the time there's the seven, yeah. Not in the superintendent.
KRC.
You know how we get... A R R.
We already heard you, guys.
Max, what? First name.
C R R.
She made R R.
No, I... Karen.
Just me.
You know, Kathy, her office.
And she... I would say old ones.
Was she, uh...
Those were done back in the eighties or whatever. But current.
Hi.
I can...
Our employment services director.
Well, but more detailed than, like, the surveyors now?
I'm certainly less distant, correct. We got a little level of detail.
I mentioned all the non-gender.
Oh, no, it's trying to... Trying to recreate.
With the old style mapping. Okay. So, we can look at supervisors and sign off like they need to.
Actually, really, how many did you... We have more than I said.
Yeah.
Good. How'd you take your ducks? Where did they go?
All three.
Yeah. Actually, she got lost there.
And then down there.
I have a dog. They're not...
Everything in the side, you value all.
Yeah, now that that's your face. Maybe if you start... Oh, so sorry. Thank you, Melissa. Oh, yes. Yes, yes. Mike. It was my side.
All right. Nice break over.
Oh, no, they're former.
Was standing for tomorrow. How this... What is your role? Yeah, I grew up there.
I knew she was a demo. Getting her...
I don't think she's...
Charlie, Charlie lost them.
Again, this, uh... I give that to the other.
Be ready.
Yes, sir. Always.
All right. Home in. Heavenly Father, grant us the knowledge and the wisdom to make decisions that will benefit the county of Tulsa and may we never forget the egregious acts that occurred eleven years ago today and pray to be with all the family of those that perished in those incidents. In your name, great, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes, Row 28.
Question, correction, on page two point six. Page two point six. At the nine fifteen item, on the second last line, the years are the... Point should be two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen.
Any other, uh... Questions? Roll call.
Oh, that'll...
Move by our second member, roll call.
Supervisor, you can hear it.
Aye.
Carter, I'm Sam.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Aye, pass five oh. Security public comment, this is for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Seen that? Close, public comment. Now, the closed session is, uh... The closed session will be held at, I believe, ten forty-five, this point, beginning at ten forty-five.
Yes, sir.
And we will announce after we complete those items on the closed session document. Okay, staff reports. This is time for the staff to update the board on things going on in their department.
Good morning.
Good.
Good, Joe.
How was everyone's day?
Awesome.
Good. I have more good news for you.
You like it?
Really incredibly pleased to report to you guys that we received full funding for the migrant center groupings. As well as funding for the set aside that will improve the migrant housing center daycare out there, so... I sent that to you guys, just wanted to put it in public. And I really appreciate all the help and support of you guys and everybody else that helped me through this and I think we're gonna solve a big problem out there.
Joe, that... How long ago did we apply for that senior junior? I mean, it seems like when I saw the income across last week, I thought that felt like...
It was...
Two years ago.
It was about four and a half months ago.
There's questions.
Yeah, we were supposed to know earlier, but with the new rules and regulations with the supernova, they said it took them a while to get it through. So, we're just currently waiting for the agreement to come and they said that that's on the way. And once we sign that, we can begin the project. I've already had a meeting with several people to help me with the grant. So, as soon as we get the contract signed, we're ready to move with the grant administrator and consultants and whatnot or maybe we are, we even are, we will do that. I am going to move on this real quick because the migrant center opens in April, on April fifteenth. And I plan to have this done prior to opening. So, we're gonna have an interesting winter. Hopefully it cooperates. Although we do need rain too, so it's a little sore today, but we're gonna do everything we can to get through this quickly.
What's the anticipated closure date for the days?
October thirty-first this year. They voted for the... Every year, the tenants get together and vote for whether they want to extend the... The booking of the center. To... They extended it additional two weeks before close and we do that typically on a year basis. And while we're on the subject of the migrant center, I wanted also to let you guys know that we were at ninety-five percent at the migrant center this year, which is the highest it's been in several years. And I wanted to give Eddie Rio's credit for that. He's been a really good dog and plan at the migrant center. And when you talk to the people there, they feel like it's a safe place to bring their families and stay now. And I don't know that it was that way in the past. So, I think things have changed a lot in a very positive manner. So, we're getting more people out there. So, it's a great service to the community and the farming community. And compared to labor, there's a labor shortage beginning this year. And if that's something earlier, then it's a little bit better later, so... Thanks.
Thanks, Joe.
Good morning. The pavement markings is the traffic control markings that the Asian House contract for. The work is now completed. That's what work for our county. So, there's the stop signing teams, ready, for example. Installable function. We got a lot of good comments on this. Please so far, stop signing. And here we're working on your side of the...
And I've noticed we don't have markings Friday late in the afternoon. So, they say the best till last.
Probably want to be like, "Do sunny for it?" Yes. Just look far on the...
Late Friday.
The other thing is we can have a security meeting. Mike is working on the bicycle plant. First meeting was in Massala. There's going to be a meeting tonight at Williams and the following, our buckler pulsa. These meetings, Williams starts at six P M. That's at the council chambers. Our bucko is at fire hall at six P M. And the pulsa is at the city hall here at seven thirty on Thursday. So, our bucko Wednesday, pulsa Thursday, Williams Friday.
Before you run off, I've had a request from the fire district up in sunny four to, if you could look at... In front of the fire hall, they're requesting a double yellow line. I don't know if that's possible or reasonable, but whoever needs to look at that, if you could have them chase that down. They've apparently had a couple of close calls with people passing while somebody's backing. I don't know how that happened. Yeah, right in front of the firehouse. That's the normal...
So, they have the red light on, still passing.
Yeah. Right. So, anyway, I got it, but just a request. If it's not possible, at least we'll...
And Joe, I want to get...
This is too great.
Regarding trying out to cause those sign up in the cemetery, the issue we had is Ryan's. Couple families missing female who were trying to come from the bay area, you know. I guess GPS sometime wasn't giving the direction to get to the cemetery, how to get out there. So, I wanted to get a sign on the cemetery. So, I want to talk to you.
I guess you should not see, get in there and send a note to the systems like Google. Plus, not less, they can correct addresses.
It's found in this field.
What sign?
Yeah, I'll go. Do you have someplace that really important to go?
Three minutes.
That's three minutes for end of dock, waiting. Right? Sure.
He's just been chastised before that.
He learned. Any impact on the recent fires on the west side of the valley on county services that you're aware of?
I think we're aware of. We have gotten more impacts than what it turned out to be. So far, not. We keep some of the roads closed a little longer because of keeping it clear for emergency vehicles. That's the biggest impact. Some of the roads were closed a little longer for public. I think total access was provided as needed from outside visitors. They have some amazing impact there.
Yeah, this year's industry dollar bill was busy. As was the COVID.
The fire this last week did not receive any reports. I did not receive any complaints, like, did you get any in the office? So, really, surprising as it was, with not fires, people seem to know what to do and did not have any real major response. All worked out pretty well. So, you're... You're... Do you use air tubes?
Oh.
But it looked like everything was now pretty well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Need of the staff. Okay. Moving on to the nine ten item, personnel.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good afternoon, item A, you get your health services. Consider adding an additional position of licensed psychiatric technician. Back deep box number one, twenty twelve.
Yes, with the addition of contracted psychiatric services for children, there is a need for licensed support staff and current staff is unable to absorb the community function at this time.
Okay, I guess my question, obviously, is, is our meeting? Where's the status part in the proposed budget?
It's not in the current proposed budget. The issue is, we're currently paying a lot of overtime to our current licensed psychiatric technician in order to herd, just to keep up with the increased case load. And with the addition of the telepsychiatry for the children, which is why this is a part-time... It's not a full-time position, it's a part-time position. And the intent is, as we continue to expand services and move children off of Dr. Turbule's caseload and move him on to the telepsychiatry, that Dr. Turbule's caseload will remain the same, but the children will expand and that is the reason for the addition. It's only a part-time extra health physician and it will help us alleviate the overtime that we're currently paying for the licensed professional.
So, this is a limited part-time and not a permanent full-time?
Correct.
So, the T F T goes away?
Unlimited part-time.
Yeah, correct. Would you want me to cross, delete that, or?
Well, it's like, everything's on here.
Yeah, that's...
So, it's limited, limited part-time, so we can scrap permanent full-time.
Yes.
Correct. Which means there's no benefit either.
That's correct.
And that's like the culminated essentially.
Basically, at this point in time, what we're looking at is less than maybe fifteen to eighteen hours per week. And if it winds up, that we wind, that the department goes to where I'm thinking it's going as far as need goes, then I may come back in and put it into a full-time budget. But... So that the board understands that revenue generated by the LPT, okay, is more than sufficient to cover their costs.
You want to add sort of clarification, sorry, go ahead. You said LPT and that could stand for licensed psychiatric technician or limited part-time. So, what does LPT mean?
I believe in this scenario, it would fit that, admit licensed psychiatric technician.
So, it's... But I want a limited part-time position, not a permanent full-time.
So, it's an LPT LPT?
Yes. Also...
By Carter, send Van Groot. And then the TFA stands for what? Since we're into acronym.
That is the unit, the negotiation unit, so it's a professional.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call.
Supervisors of jury.
Aye.
Carter, I'm Van.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, pass five oh, item two. Consider adding the position of a medical billing specialist permanent full-time. Matang is range twenty, effective October one, twenty twelve.
At this time, we would request kindly that you remove item two and items three from the agenda.
So, done. Complete personnel, consider approving a maintenance request in the amount of forty-nine thousand six oh six seventy-five, participate eleven twelve.
Yes, this is to cover unanticipated professional services for two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve.
Moved by Marshall. Second member. Roll call.
Supervisors in jury.
Aye.
Carter, I'm Van.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, pass five oh. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Fifteen, you get your health services. Consider approving maintenance and support services agreement between the county of Tulsa Behavioral Health Services and national print time recorder company for maintenance of the time Q plus biometric time blocks located with Department of Behavioral Health in Safe Haven, effective September eleven, twenty twelve, in terms of conditions set forth on copyright and share design. Yeah, but... I'll take it for the batteries in them.
Uh, no, actually, this is all connected. Um, it's a computerized system that tracks. Everybody's clocking in and out by their finger.
Oh. Moved by Carter, send Van Groot. Any other questions? Roll call.
Supervisors in Carter.
Aye.
Carter, I'm Van. Marshall.
Aye.
Aye, pass five oh. Item B, considering seventy proposals for comparable bands for Department of Behavioral Health's Carlos, top of motors of Tulsa for two, two thousand thirteen Dodge Grinch Caravans, seventy... Forty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-nine for two. Number two, Sankey Auto Mobile Company for two, two thousand thirteen Chevy Express fifty-hundred vans for fifty-two thousand eight fifty-sixty-six.
Move to your stuff.
Moved by Marshall, second by Carter. Special. Roll call.
Supervisors in jury.
Aye.
Carter, I'm Van. Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye. Item C, consider awarding proposals for comparable bands for the Department of Behavioral Health Services and operate as a director to purchase said vehicle.
Actually, I have a record in the... A little bit, which is public. Which is two thousand three and it's got the need, the ability to move the one person.
Is he budgeted? And this is first, is this in two thousand thirteen or two thousand?
Yeah, but it was carryover. Yeah, it was part of...
Okay.
It was pushed out last year. That's carryover.
Carryover, okay.
Moved by Van.
Second.
Second member, any other questions? Roll call.
Supervisors in jury. Carter. Van. Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye. Pass five oh. Thank you. Nine twenty item. Consider accepting a Caribbean California library literacy and English acquisition service program grant awarded the amount of sixteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars from the California State Library to support library, adult, family and mobile literacy programs, staff, supplies and events. Now, provide the county library to sign the application and any related documents on behalf of the board of supervisors, of course, admitted to the state.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, this is a grant that we received from the state library. We received it with a number of years, but actually, because of the coming, we did not receive, because they did not receive funding at the state level. And this year, they did get that funding in the state of, which allows us to support this amount. In addition to the sixteen thousand, just bet you on here, we also received in June, a emergency literacy grant involved. Basically, they gave us some money from federal funds of seven thousand. And so, the total amount that we have together between these two are twenty-three, almost twenty-four thousand dollars to support the readers and program.
This is an added additional staff.
This is supporting the staff that we have that's...
Moved by Van. Second member, any questions?
Yeah, one question, Mr. Turner. Looking at the second page, Wendy, it looks like in two thousand ten, eleven, we served thirty-seven people for a little over twenty-three thousand dollars. In eleven twelve, we served thirty people for almost eighty thousand dollars.
Are you questioning the number of people or the dollar?
Oh, a dollar, no. We served more people in ten eleven for twenty-three thousand than we served in eleven twelve for seventy-nine thousand.
The basic cost there, so is that have to do with the salary of the staff that supports it and that the individual was doing merit in this last year? We received that. That's only the state of the nation. We received contributions from the community to be able to do the local businesses, the larger initiatives that they wanted with the program and community events that would go out to. So, that doesn't increase that we're seeing. The wire doing more or less. The students that we have, some of them have graduated, some of them have moved out of the area and some of them just got out of the program. We are doing more outreach as we can using our own plans. The data we use and plans that we see from this side to be able to do with the program and this one. I don't know if it's... So, the different ones that we have in Houston, I bet you that we showed you that are the ones that we're going to use tonight.
I guess I need to sit down with you. So, you can better explain this to me.
Okay.
I think what Supervisor was saying is you went from a little over six hundred dollars per individual to almost twenty-five hundred dollars per individual in a year. to almost twenty-five hundred dollars per individual in a year. Possibly.
And if that was because we gave one person a merit increase? A merit increase of thirty, forty thousand dollars is significant.
I'll talk, I'll speak to you.
I'll talk, thank you.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter, aye. Van, aye. Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, that's five oh, thanks, Wendy. Nine twenty-five, Health Human Services, consider approving agreement between the county of Lusa Health Human Services and Public Guardian and seeing as applications incorporated for EMS, Internet, edition services effective September eleven, twenty twelve, the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement and operate for chairman's side. Good morning, Elizabeth.
Good morning, um, this is basically a case management system to utilize with Public Guardian. We've never had anything like this before, um, that our Public Guardian, um, has some compliance. So this will help keep things in place and as a better documentation, um, for the case files for each one of the clients that we have. Um, that's another thing we haven't. And during an audit this past year, I've learned a lot about Public Guardian, what's not present and what's present. So this is a tool that helps us get track and accountable. And it's also a tool whereby anybody can come behind and see where the other person left off. And that's really important for Public Guardian if we've, um, with staff capacity and some challenges there.
Sergeant Wood.
I'm with the roll call.
Moved by Carter.
Second.
Second by Andrew, any question? Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Van.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, that's five oh. Okay. Raising my alarm here. Advance at nine thirty. Um, let's go to consent items, you know, well, only six. Any, uh, questions on any of those?
I'm with consent items, one for six.
Moved by Carter.
Second.
Second by Marshall. Special, any question? Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter.
Aye.
Van.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, that's five oh. How's about we do supervisors' reports to member, having any interest?
Uh, talking to some Ryan residents, um, pretty upset about it. Finally took the, raised the steam on that Ryan. Very first day, Tim was the dog, he walked in on these guys, he killed. They had no sidewalks there, and I don't want to finger it on Calcan. There's, uh, it's pretty sad to raise the steam on that little town with a turn there. Anyway, the dog got killed, and so they called me, and I said, well, we did everything we could, just like Lusa, and I'm going somewhere, I'll turn, and then I, then I had to call up, apparently, this is some, uh, a team from Japan. On the off chance I had to put some kind of small sign of an on-road, some very, so. And a few others, just called them.
To make sure we're not set into that application too.
Yeah.
He's been trying to talk about Dylan.
Yeah, we all, we all do that.
Get the basket items, please, Jill. I'm not going to go on this, so you guys next week. Anything that he has not, um, or should we get, kind of, we can talk to him now.
Thank you, so thank you. For what?
For seriously.
You got R S V, you know?
Oh, you already did. Um, CSAC meeting last week, um, by one vote again, they voted to support the governor's tax proposal. And they allowed us to do it again, probably from, which is questionable, but, um, I know I didn't post. But they did correct in the sense of that, so, uh, away they go.
And they got you, you're director, because still?
No, they haven't interim, they've not, um, they've not even had entries.
He was a state sophomore?
Thank you. Steve, yeah.
And he was intro in CIA at Sacramento County, about eighteen months, two, fifteen months, give or take, before they got Mr. Haskins down.
Oh, the guy, um, was involved with the incident manager for the Cortina Fire, the sixteen complex, over the life of that fire. And they were very good about staying in contact with us about our desires and, uh, contacted all the ranch landowners that knew about their proposed firing operation to burn off Cortina Ridge to prevent it from, uh, jumping high rate of points. So, so that, uh, that went well. Uh, I went to the, uh, social event of the year, and it's telling for the Saturday night, with Supervisor Evans, and I thought that was, uh, very, very nice. Uh, and then, uh, the bridge over Salt Creek is completed most nights, as is the bridge on Evans Road. It is, uh, appears to be nearing completion. Uh, they're, they're working on that very well. Uh, we hoped it'd be done by olive harvest, but that didn't happen, but, uh, the, uh, farm, olive farmers are out there that, uh, have pushed and have that bridge installed, are very, very happy. They're not, even though we didn't complete the bridge, they're confident they're others, so they're, they're happy, all is good. So, uh, I look forward to the bike path meeting tonight in Warriors, I'll be attending that. All is, all is well, District Chair.
Well, um, I also attended the extravaganza Saturday night, and that's, uh, telling for, did well. And, uh, just for FYI, I got a call from, uh, the county committee late this today that we have a, what we believe is a, one of the most, well, the phone involved three, considering they seem to start to be cutting the niching returns, so we'd like to keep it up with the usage. Um, so they're going to try to, uh, get the gallery running as best they can, and, uh, maybe have to pull that in before our next meeting, and so after the fact, we'll have another situation that has to be developed. So, I think we're just wearing that. Anyway, okay. Then, uh, nine thirty item. Central Services, consider accepting proposals for the Luscan Department of twenty twelve, thirteen envelope order as follows. Davis Printing and Copy at fourteen hundred and fifty-five seventy. Tri-City Technology at nineteen hundred and ninety dollars and fifty-four cents. Fix Printing at nineteen ninety-six, ninety-six. And Crown Point Envelope at twenty-three eighty-two, twenty-eight.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, for those of you that don't know, this is Angela Rosen, uh, one of my constituents. And she's taken over, uh, this Catherine's home, and.
Not exactly taking over.
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
With, uh, some motion for accepting of the proposal.
Move to second.
Marshall.
Second.
Second by Carter. I'll do that, I'm working with, with, whatever. There, aye. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury. Carter, aye. Van, aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, that's five oh. Item B, consider awarding proposals for municipal department of gold, twenty twelve, thirteen envelope order as represented.
We would recommend that blow his head, of course, our proposed, which is saving one thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy cents.
Substantially lower.
Substantially.
Uh, move for word.
Moved by Marshall.
Second.
Second by Andrew, any special? Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter, aye. Van, aye. Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, that's five oh, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Nine thirty-five, Public Works, consider approving an agreement between the municipal works department and Cook construction to provide county with repairs to the CSA's insurance water system of the August thirty-one, twenty twelve through October thirty-one, twenty twelve, on behalf of, to receive a thousand dollars with a fifteen-day written termination, likely to be worked on by the state. One night.
Twenty-third. This, this item that you have is, is a symptom of the, of the issue, the CSA one that Supervisor Evans spoke briefly in the report. Our onsite guy, uh, Warren Spalando, there are, noted that we were experiencing a reduction in the treatment tank, started looking around heavily. We thought that that was the problem we were dealing with. We felt that we needed to take care of that heat, which was the Friday before the three eight. Patch the leak. Reduction and production continued, so we've been trying different things, and we still haven't figured out exactly what it is that, that we're talking about. It most likely is a well period. This contract, though, is for the repair of the line that we felt was the initial problem that we had to take care of before the three eight.
Well, wouldn't it make any sense to increase the amount? I mean, it's the same person doing all this call-up on the.
Different animals.
Different animals.
This, this was basically to expose a six-inch line that was called.
Okay.
What we're talking about, but potentially talking about with well period, is pulling some merciful pump.
Oh, all right, okay.
So, so this, thousand dollars doesn't sound like a lot. Is that just exposing the line, repairing a, a short section, or? It's exposing one. Just exposing one. Barney needs to dig the holes so we can get our guys in there to patch it. Okay. It's more like. Oh, okay. And they're not to do that here.
No, of course.
I guess in double. Okay, okay.
Moved by Carter and by Andrew, any other discussion? Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter, aye. Van, aye. Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, that's five oh, we hear that. Okay, how about? Uh, any items of statutory matters, legislation, any that you care about? Okay. Claims?
We can ask that.
I think that's always been, it says there are no claims based on what Supervisor has been period of twenty to the ten.
Obviously, so that you know what you're doing, thank you yourself.
Oh, okay.
Just hope, yeah, but it's always there.
So. This is five oh, zero.
Putting specials down.
Shouldn't be seen as ready on Trinity County probation any longer, I would think.
That's up to the end.
Uh, that may not be so.
Really?
I just received this one contract, that's why it's.
Okay, so we did, yeah.
Okay.
All the discussion. All the regulars. Regulars.
Second.
Regulars, moved by Carter, second by Marshall, special. Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Second.
Carter, aye. Van, aye. Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, that's four oh one. Is it not, uh, in, uh, specials now?
No, I just want to.
I just want. Moved by Andrew. You sign it in?
Sign it in, sure.
Second by Carter, any question?
Do we need to talk to Central Services since it's a new, um, person in there about that gas current situation? I see the Sherwin is putting under the comment, so maybe she just wants to be guarded. If the department is using Sherwin? It says in the Central Services, I have no, I have no idea if it was the Central Services department or if it was another department, it just says Central Services.
Roll call.
Supervisors and jury.
Aye.
Carter, aye. Van, aye. Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, that's five oh. Nine forty item, under control. Consider adopting a resolution, Luscan and municipal charges to adopt and fix the profit tax rates of the county in Lusa for the twenty twelve, thirteen, just to hear how the right chairman is signing.
This is standard, um, asking what you take every year in order to adopt the profit tax rates and one of both of the two tax forms.
Moved by Andrew.
Second.
Second by Carter. Question? Roll call.
Excuse me. Supervisors and jury. Carter, aye. Van, aye. Marshall.
Aye.
And Evans.
Aye, that's five oh. Too much efficiency going around here. Okay, let's go to, uh, administration, item ten B, can't do ten A or B. Consider approving the purchase of board voting booths for the elections department in the amount of forty-nine, forty-nine, eleven. Just how we're going with Austin.
Probably.
Okay. Yeah.
Yes. Is John coming? You said you couldn't do it.
Uh, we have a closed session, closed session. You didn't catch it, did you?
I did.
Good morning, Lady Butler.
Good morning.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you again.
Excellent.
Your shirt's attached.
Take the bag with that way.
Ladybug, you're in Michael's shirt's match.
Oh, oh.
Is there any question?
Oh. She's funny.
Good morning, sorry.
Morning.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And I'm told, so I've turned up to get my told to and all this, and I have to find two people that are following me. Um, this is for the voting booths, um, so.
Yes, that's for you to see your tips.
Well, we, I, I realize that you're not finished with the budget session, and, um, however, I, if you're implying to approve this request, if you know, I said, see, well, because we need to order all their shipping time, and there's a lot of planning involved, we'd like to make sure that everything's in order, so we can pick them out, uh, in time for the election. And we have gotten all of our other voting booths, these voting booths actually have four slots in them, so that each one is actually four voting booths. Um, the others that we have gotten thus far have been through a brand, through public companies. And, um, we're short of having a new, um, style, and, um, throughout halls and spaces, so, some places have two of the newer style voting booths, um, we are just, um, always using the ones that we have gotten, probably about thirty years ago now, which have been reconfigured more than once, um, based on different voting, um, machines or groups, and, so, we'd like to add these, um, there's four voting booths, and there's, um, four positions, or four slots in each one.